Okay, welcome back to our, do we get Jared back online too? Will you let me know if you see him? Okay, we're gonna get him here when he can jump in. We're gonna jump right in, back into three point two. Discussion of the request of fiscal year twenty twenty five, twenty twenty six, Public Works budget. Kyle.
Thank you, Mayor. Before we start, we do have our Streets Manager and Water Manager, Operations Director, and of course, our Public Works Director here. So they're ready to ask any questions you might throw at them. And I'm happy they're here, so I don't have to remember everything, so. I did also try to pare this presentation down, looking at the agenda. So the staff reported, it goes into much more detail, but of course, if any questions come up, we're here to answer them. So Public Works, as you can see, has fifty four and change FTEs, the largest division, department being Water of those. One note we will get into is we are going to propose with the tentative budget that one of the frozen positions and facilities, we remove the funding, so we keep the FTE, but we're going to request removing funding to balance the budget, so.
So in essence, we will not fill the position for the viennial?
For two years.
For two years.
Starting with the Public Works Administration, going back a few weeks, we also have a Community Development Administration. Last year, when we set this department up, we only put the personnel costs in. This year with the budget, we're also moving the operating costs associated with those personnel in. So those are getting moved from other departments. Water, facilities, there's a couple other departments those are being pulled from, so.
Oh yeah, it's really inconvenient when you do that for the people who are used to not have to pay for those.
It makes it easier for us to know how much we're spending, spending in those areas. So that, that's why that increase looks so high on twenty five. The only other major thing for one time is we do have a computer rotation program, so there are some computers in rotation on that. Moving to facilities, as you can see, the increased request was a hundred and eleven thousand and change for twenty five. The majority of that is due to operating costs associated with the community centers. A reminder, when the Community College was in there, they were paying the utilities for that building. That has shifted back to us now that we, we have the building. Of note, with the Columbus Center renting the basement, we are charging them for forty five percent of the utilities. So we do have an offset of those costs, of some of the forty five percent of those costs. As you can see, there's also a couple career ladders, and then they did ask for a few one-time items, such as concrete sealer, asphalt maintenance, and so forth. Fleet was probably the easiest department in Public Works. They really went through their budget with a fine-tooth comb. As you can see, the overall increased request in twenty five was actually a decrease, and then a small increase in twenty six, and that's just due to normal anticipated cost increases, and then an anticipated COLA and insurance increases in twenty six. And as you see, they also had some laptop replacements. Streets had a number of requests, as you can see, so their initial request was for an additional six hundred and eighty-three thousand, which would have increased their budget twenty percent in twenty five, and then twenty-three percent in twenty six. They had requested a new Streets Technician for both years, so one in twenty five and one in twenty six. The seventy-two is just for one of the years. So as we've mentioned, we're not recommending any new FTEs, so that is not recommended for approval. They'd also asked for an additional eighty-nine thousand in sidewalk right-of-way maintenance and road improvements, and then an additional five hundred thousand in pavement management, which would have been a twenty-three percent increase, and then an increase in asphalt maintenance. A lot of this is due to increased costs, but then also they are maintaining more lane miles than they used to. So just with that, what our funding recommendations will be when you see the tentative budget next week, it's not approving the positions, as I mentioned, decreasing that road improvement request by half, so taking it down to a hundred and twenty thousand increase. And then on pavement management, reducing their request by three hundred and fifty thousand. Of note, even with that reduction, it still is over a fifty percent increase from what they got last year for pavement management. So it still, still is a good, a good increase. I think it's a good compromise to keep the budget balanced. In twenty six, however, they did ask for two point, almost two point nine million in pavement management, and that, in the recommended budget, will be fully funded. And then in twenty six, we didn't recommend any other budget reductions, so they are getting all of the items that they had asked for outside of the personnel, of course.
Just as a question about that, so is it in the notes? I recall we had a discussion about the funding of pavement management after we had the report on the condition of the roads, right?
Yeah.
And the last time we made a decision, I think it was like seven hundred thousand or nine hundred, something like that.
Previously.
Yeah, it was a lot less than what was recommended.
Yep, correct.
I mean, I understand the requests, and I'm not disagreeing that it probably needs to be done. What, what has changed in the last, I don't even know how long that was, two years, three years?
Right when we started.
Twenty nineteen is when we did the initial.
The study?
The study.
And it was in twenty twenty when we?
Started making some adjustments. In twenty twenty, the budget was already approved at that time, and so in twenty twenty-one, when we did the viennial budget, because that would have been twenty twenty-two.
We didn't start in twenty, yeah, twenty-two.
Yeah, sorry, it's all buller.
We increased it, I think, one point five.
Got it.
Twenty-two, twenty-three, we went to like one point seven. And then, and then during that time, we went through, looked at that study more in depth, and then put together some projections to say every, every six years, we want to do every road. So that's seventeen percent of the city roads every year. And then we have about a four percent increase in lane miles every year due to growth, and then there was inflation. So we added all of that together, and that's what these budgets are resulted in, is that seventeen percent every year, plus the additional lane miles, plus the inflation.
So I should point out one thing, that one point seven, so you see the road improvements? I think if you look in the original budget, that's like sixteen thousand. We had all the painting, striping, all that in the, in the pavement management, we separated those. And so the one-twenty should cover the striping and those things, so, so we're trying to put more to what goes on the asphalt. We're gonna have to walk before we can run, and we just did, we're doing another PCI study.
Yeah, so we've done, we're working through the mapping now, and they'll be in the next month or two, going through and doing.
We're gonna take over our streets.
We'll get an updated number.
In the fall, we'll see that report.
We'll pick them up at the Hill and Rose Crest, on the Riverton Park.
You see how they're doing that off the front cameras and stuff now, dude? Yeah, so awesome, yeah.
They're also doing it off your phone.
Yeah.
I think it's important, and I don't want to belabor it or hijack your conversation, but I think this is an important conversation, at least for those members of the public that will actually watch this, is we were substantially below what was recommended funding levels, mainly because we felt like we had a little bit of room before our roads got to kind of an unsatisfactory point. I think there was a specific point about that study that even though it may rate it a sixty, there's a lot of different kinds of sixties, right? And so we were willing to underfund it for a while because we thought that we were still adequate. But we've all seen the roads have some struggles the last couple of years with, you know, severe weather, a lot of snowplows, all that kind of stuff. And so I think this is a prudent move because it's gonna save us money over the long haul. I remember that, the graph, it's all coming back to me anyway. But I remember the graph about how, as you invest, it actually lowers your costs over ten, twenty years, right? The lifetime of these roads, so. I'm, I'm supportive of this increase, but I just wanted to highlight it because this is, I mean, double, triple what it was three, four years ago, so.
If you remember, in twenty nineteen, that study recommended in twenty nineteen, three million dollars per year.
Yeah.
And so we're slowly getting, that was our whole general fund.
Yeah, it was, it was like, we just didn't have the money for it. But I think it was intentional to, to fund below what was recommended. But I don't think we can continue to do that and have drivable roads in our cities, so.
What takes more sense to fund it, even when they're, they're good, you treat them?
Now, yeah.
Yeah, you stay on top of it.
If it's not appropriate, we shouldn't have their building.
It costs too much to get it back, so, yeah.
How does, how does raising that FTE or not allocating that affect operations?
Yeah, so we, so we had, so we have a new Streets Manager, Eric Dietrichson. And so we had some discussions, so this budget was prepared prior to him being the Streets Manager. And since then, we've had some discussions, so I think holding these new allocations is gonna be okay because in discussion, really, the best thing to do is to try to hire three new additional employees because it really doesn't do us any good until we can get a new crew, really. So I think holding these now and then maybe asking for, you know, a bigger lump in twenty-seven or twenty-eight is gonna be more beneficial than just asking for one each year because there's, the efficiencies just don't, they're not as great with just one and two here, so.
Moving to snow removal and street signs, so they, we allocate a portion of their time to these two departments, and then when they actually code in their time, we code the actuals to the right place, but for budgeting purposes, we just do a percentage. Snow removal did ask for an additional fifteen thousand of overtime, but looking back, it had been a number of years since they had had any adjustment to their overtime budget, and yet salaries have increased, benefits have increased, so it made sense to make that. So there's no, just to be clear, especially to the public, there's no change to the level of services. It's really getting the budget caught up with the actuals that have been happening in prior years. And then in twenty six, they had just asked for some additional money for salt and equipment maintenance and repair, and that's really just to cover anticipated cost increases. And with streetlights, the initial request was an increase of a hundred and seven, almost a hundred and eight thousand. As you can see, it's about thirty-two thousand in twenty-five. One of the main things in twenty five is when we do blue stakes, we have been correctly coding the time to streetlights. However, we hadn't been coding that time in the budget, so this year, we're getting that corrected, so that, that's causing that increase of thirty-five thousand. In addition, on the operating side, each year, they do some repair and some maintenance with their contract through Salt Lake County for about thirty thousand. That has historically been treated as a one-time cost, so it shows it as an increase. That's why the increase is thirty-three thousand, thirty thousand of that are those repairs and upgrades that they will do. And then in addition, with the additional lights and then vandalism and theft, they requested an additional thirty thousand in their replacement repair budget. In order to balance the budget, the City Manager will recommend just reducing that by five thousand.
Can we electrify the signs?
I just wanted to make sure, understand this right, we're requesting thirty thousand dollars to deal with the impacts of theft and vandalism?
Well, and just general repairs to.
It also includes the increased cost in the light fixtures.
Sure.
A little while ago, we brought a bunch of light fixtures in front of the council out front, and the one chosen was the one that has the non-glare in the residential homes. That fixture is about five hundred dollars more than the old fixtures. Majority of that cost goes to the developers when they install the new fixture. But if we get a streetlight that's ran over and damaged, we have to purchase that by, so it increases the, the average number of lights we get hit per year between thirty and fifty. So you add that in, it fills up.
And we do try to attempt to recover from insurance when possible. We're changing the accounting for it, so they, the Streets Department will get credit for that payment back. It used to just get absorbed into the general fund.
Got it.
Go into like all the abyss, the general fund.
I was just curious as to if there was a quantifiable number on vandalism and theft.
We hit them a lot here. More than any place I've ever been, our cars are attracted to our streetlights. For some reason, our drivers, they jump in.
When they're front, I don't know, they'll be having a lot.
Do you stop installing the magnetic lights?
You go where you're looking, right?
You go where you're looking, that's right.
You go like. That's why cop cars get hit all the time.
Curvy roads result in stuff.
Kyle.
Cars going off the road.
Do you know on knockdowns? So you understand what that is. Typically, if like, a few weeks ago, down here on Main Street, north of one-twenty-six, on the way out to the bridge, we were driving down the road, and we noticed a bunch of streetlights out in the road. We went out and checked it, they've been cutting the wires, getting ready to.
Pull cops, steal them.
Yeah. And so we had about twelve thousand dollars worth of wire theft last year. We caught these early, got them reconnected, so it just caused us the amount for the labor and the connectors to go back out and a few pieces to, it didn't cost us the full amount. That's what we're listing down as vandalism because they didn't quite steal.
Do you need to increase the taser budget?
Well, we did, we caught, we caught some individuals, I think we went to Magnum and recovered.
Yeah.
Or robbery. The problem is, we can't put that back.
Put it back in line.
In the ground where it came from, so it sits, and it sits in evidence for a minute, too.
I mean, vandalism's tough all around, even the restrooms out front are currently closed with vandalism, which was not fun on Monday night for everybody, but that's what it is, right?
You should be close to get where you're at.
Yeah.
Yeah, they did the, they got them painted, and everything's just about put back together.
Every city I've worked in, they'll park bathrooms, get vandalized. It's super frustrating.
Weird. In fact, we'd like to invite you all to come out on Monday morning, so that's a busy weekend, and see what our parks look like.
We've been in the high school bathrooms this week.
Well, I mean, just the parks, the, the amount of trash and the things that people leave. And it's, it might be worth.
It's a great, a parallel to the podcast.
Either that, we'll take some pictures and show you, you can see that.
We should, yeah.
There you go.
A straight podcast, thank you, John.
He's gone.
Go around, the, the, the day after effects.
Aftermath.
Aftermath.
Okay, moving on to water, so as I'm sure you, you remember, you did pass a rate increase that will start in this fiscal year. So these numbers reflect the rate increase. I will make a note, it doesn't reflect any capital that will be in the master plan, which Water's still working on, and then the impact of the facility plan, since that's all tied together. So that will come back through a budget amendment at another point. The water model assumes that we will be bonding for those capital projects, so it won't affect this operating budget. So twenty-five, the increased request is approximately two million dollars, and you see is twenty-six is one point eight. We'll go into a little bit more detail. I do want to point out, the water model assumes that there will be over a million dollar operating loss in twenty-five, and then a smaller operating loss of about two hundred and ninety-three thousand as those rates catch up with the operating expenses. The good thing I see about twenty-six is, working with the Public Works Director, we've really pared down our development-related revenue. So if development continues at the current rate it has been for the next couple of years, there won't be a loss in twenty-six, but we, we did budget very conservatively on that just because we don't know where the economy's going to go.
You gotta get a better magic eight ball.
The vibe, we don't.
Yeah, I was gonna say, I, I was gonna say, but then, some days, it feels like we're just budgeting off of vibes because we, the trends are just all over the place, and we got our sales tax that looked really good, so we've got a good vibe going for sales tax right now, but.
But it was three extra days in the cycle, so it's, it's, so we, it feels a little bit like a roller coaster. We're just, I think we just went to the top, and we're hoping we're still climbing, but we find out in a month.
Yeah, well, we're expecting a drop next month, but. So on the operating funds side, the majority of the operating funds increase, so you see is the nine hundred and seventy-two thousand operating funds increase. Nine hundred and fourteen thousand of that is water purchases, so as we discussed, we'll be purchasing additional water to blend and make the water less hard. Additionally, there is a small rate increase from Jordan Valley Water. And then do we, we do expect, due to new connections and growth, there will be an increase in just water purchases. On the personnel side, there were requests for new employees that we won't be recommending for funding. That's also due to making sure everything fits within the water model, so probably five or six people have looked at the water model and made sure that this budget will fit in with that model. And there are some career ladders and certifications. The two is, I think, believe, missing a, a one in front of it.
Eighteen, eleven, twelve.
Yeah, so it's supposed to be twelve career ladders and certifications, not two, at thirty thousand, because that'd be too pricey.
One thing I'll mention, you seem throughout that I'm not gonna recommend any of the personnel, there's, there's two parts to that. One, how much money do we have? The other part is, what data do we have to justify, and what are, what are we measuring? We went through this with PD, right? We came up, here are some triggers, here's how we're gonna track. Everybody is, all departments for that, most of those are not together. So as we looked at it this year, part is like, we might need people, but we haven't, I cannot sit here in front of the council or the public and say, here's how I would justify this. Right now, it would be the vibe, I want, we want data, so we are working through that, coming up with, borrowing from some other cities, how they're doing some of their data tracking to justify, and. So you'll see when we come forward in the future with those positions, it won't just be, here's the request, it'll be, here's the request, here's the data that backs up why we need it at this point, and there, so. I just thought I'd point that out, you keep saying, big part was, I don't think we have the money. Second part is, before I come in, try to sell you that you need to hire someone, I want to know that here's the justification.
It feels like you're doing that with every aspect, not just personnel, every aspect is, and, which is how we should always be, right? This is sacred funds, just draw that from your pockets.
I will say, we met with a state group today that said, you probably need an employee to do this. It's a nice unfunded mandate from the state, so we're going to be examining that, figuring it out as we go, but.
I was just gonna add that, a lot of that data that we're starting to look at and ask departments for will also be part of your dashboard that will be coming out that you all have asked for, so we're working through all of those processes.
I think, yeah, we're gonna do that on the, I thought we'd do it on the second meeting lots, we're gonna put those on the first because then you'll actually have, we were getting ready for this meeting, nothing's changed from the draft that you did last meeting, and so Trevor and I, let's just put on the first meetings because then you'll have your, again, the cell, our sales tax numbers came out this morning. We'll show those to you at the beginning of next, but we never know when they're coming out, they always come out towards the end of the month, so.
Kind of like a month in summary.
So cool.
Yeah, and also that first, so you'll get that, and we're, we took some of the comments from last time, so you guys reworking the way that we.
It should be a good tool for you guys to, to really use, I'd say, to.
So on the capital side, even though I just said this doesn't include capital, so there are some capital requests that are outside of the master plan, and we'll get to the list. And it does include, five vehicles were requested, and then four of those were recommending for funding. And I did include in the packet the full condition assessment that Fleet went through on those and what the Fleet Committee looked at.
Appreciate that.
Another great tool, good job, Larry.
So here, here is the list of the capital projects. As you can see, they're, they're more of the smaller projects, these aren't multimillion-dollar projects, but it's refurbishments, power-to-meter vaults, items that need to be, to be done or improved or maintained. As you can see, the, the vehicle that wasn't recommended for funding is that small service truck. Two reasons for that, one is there are, the Public Works Director admitted, we really, they really need the new frozen position, because there's two positions that are still frozen in water, he needs those unfrozen to be, to be able to make the service truck really be effective and efficient. And then also, to make everything fit into the model, we had to take, we had to take that out to get the, the final number to balance out, too.
You should have a driver for the vehicle.
I have a question about the, the other F-350. I know it's got higher mileage and it, but it ranks still pretty okay, and the cosmetics was horrible, but. Are we maintaining that in our fleet, or we?
These would all be surplus.
Sure plus.
Unit one fifty.
Uh, give me two seconds.
Two oh eight.
Two oh eight.
Two oh eight is, so we're anticipating additional, because that's in twenty-six, so we're gonna have another year's worth of use on that.
On that, okay.
So you have miles and age that are gonna add to this.
That makes more sense, I mean, I was like, I got some rust only and white paint, like, fix those parts.
What about the, the work truck that's got all the paint peeling off of it?
Oh, yeah.
Keep going around, good.
Uh, those, that's probably.
That's not a, that's not a good one.
That's probably.
Sounds like unit one fifty, I think.
Sounds like.
Yeah, take an F-150 with all the.
The truck, or the, the tool bodies that we're buying seems to hold water. Hopefully, they've either fixed that in there, in their plan, or I'm wondering that.
I'm sure they retrofitted that.
Some of those bodies are the older steel bodies, rusted out on the inside, so when we're driving down the road, the tires are flicking water into the tool, so. All their tools are rusted, and they can't get them out of the tool.
Truck one fifty looks a little worn for.
Yeah.
I, I, I do, I commented when I first got in, I was like, man, you know, these other cities, they have these old trucks, they're mismatched. We've got like our fleet, like, it looks clean and everything, and it's like, why are we spending so much money on vehicles and stuff? But then you look at it, like, it's a good-looking truck, but it's got a hundred-plus thousand miles, and it's been worn, and so. And then you look at Bluff Tales out spraying weeds with an old nineteen eighty-five, whatever, and so. I'm, I'm, we've got, yeah, or golf cart, right? Yeah, so I, I'm, I'm glad we're taking care of our vehicles enough to use them, because when we do change them out, they do look like this, and so.
Moving to stormwater, which is our last department for Public Works. The initial increased request was about one point four million, a lot of that is capital, which we will get to in a minute. And then twenty-six was a three hundred and seventy-three thousand increase. Once again, most of that was capital requests. They did request an FTE of Stormwater Tech One. Once again, going back to the City Manager's comments, we're not recommending that for approval, and then there were seven career ladder certifications being requested. On the stormwater request side, operating increase request was about seventy-nine thousand. The majority of that is the admin fee, so the general fund charges to Stormwater Fund and Admin Fee. We go through that every year. We had discovered that part of the Streets Manager time, he also supervises Stormwater, was not getting charged to Stormwater, so that's for the fifty-four thousand, and then they, we did request some funds for utility fee rate study. We still need to talk internally if we will try to do that in-house, or we'll contract that out. And then Stormwater Maintenance and Enforcement for ten thousand, and there is an offsetting revenue for that. And there's the miscellaneous equipment that they had requested. Down at the bottom is a list of the capital projects that were requested. To make sure that the budget would balance to zero, the Public Works Director worked with his team to determine which projects could be moved or not funded. So as you can see, on the storm drain retrofit projects, we are recommending not fully funding those. So those are projects to retrofit the system. We did also get a grant for those projects for a hundred and thirteen thousand. As you see, the Skada Master Projects, the Public Works Director worked on modifying the scope and changing timing. So overall, over the two years, they're close to what they requested, and then the Slick Pond Lift Station, just right now, due to cost and then some other concerns, we're not recommending funding for that.
So I have a question first, unless it could be answered in thirty seconds, I do not want to talk about it tonight.
Okay.
But the question is, in, in some of the previous presentations we've had, there's been admin fees, you're pending, right? You're still working through some of those numbers. I, I would like to understand how you're doing cost allocation for that, like, is there a base for that, or kind of how that's working?
Yeah, I can write you a memo, just kind of outlining, outlining how that.
It's definitely longer than a thirty-second.
Yeah, I can't go through it in thirty seconds.
I'm just, it's, it's more of a curiosity than any real.
There's an algorithm, and they push play.
It's not as bad as what, what Nathan was telling me, what they do in California, some of the cities, where it goes through this two-cycle process, and it produces this five-hundred-page report. But it, it's still not a thirty-second, actually, but I can write a memo for you on that.
Take a whole class just on cost accounting, and it's just whatever you want it to be, it's all made up.
It's somewhere.
You're trying to direct me that way, but yeah.
With that, are there any final questions, or any questions for group bits here?
I like, Jared, like, yeah, Jared mentioned, sitting in a four-hour meeting, trying to absorb four hours of this would be, that's what we did in the past, but this is, the bite sizes are awesome.
Honestly, kudos, Kyle, to all the department managers, Nathan, the, this is, this is what we were asking for, to get these department-level analysis and reports, we can see what's going on, little by little, get a, get a discussion about it. It's, it's great, it's awesome. Every single report gives me an ulcer, but it's awesome information, so. It's, it's great, it's awesome. Every single report gives me an ulcer, but it's awesome information, so.
I love the fact that backup to the same Monty did with the fleet management. So when I see a request up there for a truck, I know it had to go through that process to even make it to that paper, so just the backend stuff that has been, and it is, is really impressive and very appreciated.
Well, the ability to compromise or sacrifice, okay, we were gonna sacrifice twenty-five and twenty-six, but in twenty-seven, we know we can get this or that. The, the workarounds you guys have been with the departments, yeah.
Great praise for these stuff guys.
Yeah, if I may, just add mine to that. Totally agree with those comments. This is what we've been asking for and especially what you had said Nathan about looking at staff numbers and having justification for that and putting a system in place to evaluate all those. Music to my ears, thank you all very much.
Okay. Good job everybody. Okay, move on to three point three, discussion of general fund grant application.
Still no work me.
We have closed session. We're doing good still. Okay, who's gonna be?
Kyle.
Kyle's gonna drop you.
Kyle said he wanted to do it, so I told him.
No, no, I said I wanted to do it.
He did. So this is our formal, uh, coming back to reporting on the formal process we did. Trying to create a formal process for our outside groups. Also like Kyle, there's, there's some rationale to where we came to the number.
Sure. So a few things I wanted to discuss tonight, this definitely is not the time for you to make a decision, but one is discuss the grant amount a little bit, how we came to that number from last year. Uh, it's currently in the budget, of course, you as a council can change that number, decide different things you wanna do with it. One is with the grant requests, is there additional information we need to reach out to these organizations to collect? So when you do have to make a decision, you feel like you have the information to make that. Uh, the third one is, uh, the friends of Harriman have indicated they do not want to do the Miss Harriman pageant anymore. Uh, so we are looking for direction on what your thoughts are on that.
You wanna bring it back to the city? We won't.
Go to the city.
Yeah, and I've had a couple discussions.
Let's, can we start with application process?
Yeah, so let's, let's work through it and then we'll talk about it, cause there's some numbers.
We kept it really simple this year. Um, in future years, it's going to get more complicated because we'll factor in federal money into that with CDDG. Those considerations, how the chance also apply will be a little bit of a different application than what you saw. If there's more information that you think would help you make a better decision, we only had the two applicants this year. My understanding is one of them has found many elsewhere, the Columbus Education Center, um, does not need the three thousand dollars anymore, is that correct, Mayor?
Yep, we'll find it, yep.
Um, so really we have the one applicant this year, could open up to more, who knows? But I don't know if you received any feedback on the application process or if there are any questions or concerns about that.
Well, it's awesome is that that they actually said we don't need that. But like, that's, that's really cool for.
We found, the state actually, I was in a meeting Monday and the state said, oh, we can find a kind of grant, they can pull that out, so we'll pull that from state grant.
How many amount they asked for us?
I'm like. It's like, yeah.
Day and a half of operations.
So should, so currently in the budget, we have ninety thousand five hundred dollars. That was, we arrived at that number, I don't know if you wanna.
Yeah, so, so basically what we did was we took the budget that was approved for fiscal year twenty-four for the expenses, which was a hundred and sixty-five thousand and change. We reduced it by what we were expecting to receive in revenue through ticket sales, grants, et cetera. So that was about fifty-five thousand eight hundred. So that left it at one oh nine, six fifty. Then we deducted thirty-one thousand five fifty and Wendy can chime in if I'm incorrect on this. That, we deducted for the sound rental cost because they were having to rent a sound system where they didn't have to anymore since we had purchased the system for them. Then we added back twelve thousand four hundred because they would need sound cams to actually run the equipment. So once all that was done, that's where the ninety, ninety thousand five hundred came from. It was a way to make sure that the budget for fiscal year twenty-four was left neutral. And we just do, and to be honest, I didn't think of it, I just pulled that, that number forward when we were creating the, the biennial budget that we're working on right now.
We take it to serve multiple years of ticket sales or averaged out or is it just the last couple or?
I, I just took strictly what was budgeted for twenty-four.
Okay, okay.
So I didn't, I didn't look at actuals.
And we didn't adjust this from, this is really, the ninety thousand five hundred was what we anticipated in the difference between the twenty-four, so that's. Well, help me, I need, this arrived, I'm just confused, cause the sound system, the way it, cause that came out about the time we were transitioning, right? But we made them pay for that last year.
And half the cost of purchasing the equipment.
Half of the cost.
Was that the Friends of Harriman?
No, um, no, that was the arts.
That was the arts council.
The arts? We deducted it, we, we deducted it from how much we gave them.
Deducted it from their budget.
From their budget. So in a way they, so in their minds, they, they were charged for it, right? Because we've deducted it from their budget.
I think half, it, it's.
And again, I'm just trying, I'm not.
It's interesting, it's interesting, it's interesting the, the semantics that are being used over it, right?
It's not a thing, it's like a two or three year payback. Well, I mean, they're just trying, cause they've, I think they had a number in their head. I have a.
How about this way, the city paid for it.
We did.
Correct.
Yeah.
Because, because the city paid for their budget. The city paid for the sound system, the city paid for the rentals, the city paid for everything.
Exactly.
Hundred percent, no. Right, it is semantics. It is semantics.
The city paid for it, they didn't pay for it.
Hundred percent, it's semantics, I'm not saying that. They're not arguing about the past year, right? They're not, they're not arguing about that, they're just, and I think, and again, I haven't talked to Chris about this, but I do think that's why their number is one oh five.
Wait, who's arguing about this?
No, they're just requesting like right, similar fund.
They're requesting one fifteen thousand. Because, and they, because in their, they don't, I don't know that they're understanding this and that's what I'm trying to.
The level of fun.
I'm just, as their liaison, so I have to go, I've gotta explain this difference right now. And I'm trying to understand, again, so it doesn't matter who paid for it, but in, they're just not under, it's just this transition process of new, you know, they're new, they're trying to figure out where their budget is. In their minds, it was one sixty-five and then it's chipped away, you know, it's been chipped away.
But I, I think, and, and apologize if I'm incorrect, but in my mind, that, that was kind of a little bit of the intent is to have it chipped away so that those kind of things kids stand on their own. They are, they are allowed to, to get money, receive donations and things like that.
Hundred percent.
So that the city can become less and less financially involved in that kind of stuff and more and more outside donors can contribute to that. So less and less taxpayer money has to go to that. That was, that, that was my.
Hundred percent.
I mean, the, the, and the thing is different too, is that those ticket revenues were, were being kept by the city and not included in their budget, right? Now that, tho- those revenues coming in are part of their.
And they're not arguing that.
Their budget, right? So that's, that's great. So when it, when they're talking about a hundred and sixty-five thousand, we never actually gave them a hundred and sixty-five thousand dollar budget, right? I mean.
That's what, that's just the line item that they saw on the.
Exactly.
Right, right, right.
Exactly.
And so they don't understand that that's not, that's not how, that's not even close to what they were really awarded. I mean, we were talking, even with the sound system, it wasn't even a hundred thousand dollars before, right? And so taking out the sound system and doing, so it's still coming up at ninety thousand dollars, I think we're actually increasing the budget from what it's been in years past. I think I can make that argument pretty easily.
So Kyle's numbers are wrong, is that what you're saying?
No. No, he said Kyle's right.
I think, yeah, I think we're.
Okay, I, and like I said, I just need to understand, cause there was some, there was some, I don't, again, I don't know who said what or where, but there's just some misunderstanding about how the sound was gonna be, affect their budget down the road, what they could apply for. So I just need to be able to go explain, I'm not arguing, I'm truly not. I just need to be able to explain it to them and I don't know, I, I mean, this makes sense, don't worry, this does make sense.
We spent sixty thousand once, so we didn't have to spend thirty to forty thousand dollars every single year for six or seven years.
Was it only, I thought it was closer to like eighties? Was it not?
Sixty-five, sixty-five, it's about a.
Sixty-five, yeah. Additionals, but it wasn't that much.
Yeah, and by the time you add the paying back, it's, it's like I said, it's two to three, it's two point something year payback. And so we've really had it for one full year.
Yeah, and it's a, and it's a seven to ten year life cycle, so.
But I do believe at one time they were told that was a one time.
Yes, hundred percent, they were told that, yep. So now they're feeling, now we're, now we're dinging them again a little bit.
It, it's not because they don't.
They don't have the expense.
They're not, they don't have the expense of renting the equipment anymore. Does that make sense?
Well, no, I know what you're, no, I'm not, hundred percent, but in their mind, they, they, their budget helped pay for it. Cause they came out of their, we told them when they broke away, this was gonna be your starting budget, right? And then we came, I mean, honestly, after they had already kinda put together their budget, that's when we came back and said, we're gonna take the sound out of your, the, the sound system out of your, or part of it. So their mind, they should get some of that ROI too, that long-term benefit to not having.
Yeah, which technically they are, right? Because they're not having to rent it.
Are they still renting stuff for certain things? It's up to them.
But they're not, but we're still dinging them, like here, if I'm understa, that's what I'm saying, in a way, though, we're still.
No, that's not, that's not, that's not the case. Here's the budget, right? Let's say it was, let's just round it, a hundred thousand dollars, okay? The hundred thousand dollars was a budget based upon them renting equipment every year. Their cost for renting it every year was more than thirty thousand dollars a year. That's how much they were spending just to rent the sound equipment every year, huh? Okay? Instead of renting the equipment, they purchased, we, we used that portion of the budget that we had awarded them to purchase this so that they would no longer need to rent it going forth. If we keep giving them the money, we're not saving anything on the rental of the equipment, cause we're still spending the thirty thousand dollars we're supposed to be saving.
And that's where, no, Jared's, no, hundred percent, I'm saying, but they think out of their budget, they should be the ones that get that additional savings or a part of that.
Instead of the city.
Instead of the city itself. They think they should. But I'm just saying, that's what they were.
Wait, so, so the arts council was not funded by the city before? The Friends of Harriman is not funded by the city? Uh, that, that's such a ridiculous statement.
It's not. I don't think that's fair to them, cause I think there was, there was an.
It is true to them, we're not taking money out of their budget. We're simply not charging them for sound equipment. It's saving thirty thousand plus a year that they don't have to spend. Therefore, we don't need to allocate them thirty thousand dollars, cause they don't have the expense of spending it anymore. It's a zero sum game. We've reduced their expenses by thirty thousand, so it's, we're reducing their revenue by thirty thousand. That's, that's all it is.
I know what you're saying, but I'm just saying there's a disagreement in how, I completely know what you're saying, I'm not, there's just a difference in how they thought it would be applied to their budget long-term, that we would, they would get from the city. The support that we would fund them from the city. Especially just year one, this is, they're just year two right now, this is. And ninety thousand five hundred again was last year's, we just brought it over, right? I didn't think that, I don't think either was thought about, is there an inflationary part of this, should this go up? We were just bringing stuff over and trying to balance budgets.
Is there an inflationary part of their tickets? Did they raise their ticket sales? If not, maybe they need to raise their ticket sales to compensate for any inflationary. I guess it's just that we have to remember that this is one little tiny aspect that just a few members of our community participated. And we're asking every member of our community to fund it. And so I think you have to find some balance there, you can't just say, yeah, okay, let's put a whole bunch more money towards that either.
And another thing that's, that's not in here, and we don't, we've never really talked to him about this, but the community room.
You, you like that?
There you, if, if we charge them like we charge everybody else, it's about ninety, ninety-five thousand dollars a year, it's a, they, they are sixty-seven percent of the usage of that room.
And are they still using storage here too? So I mean, I mean, that's the thing, they get a lot of benefits in addition.
We just, we don't, we don't charge them for this building or the other buildings.
Are they moving over to the other building?
We don't charge them for the pavilion, we don't, you know, all of that stuff.
Not even listed on here.
But again, like, they're not arguing that, like, they're not, they're not saying they don't appreciate this, there's just, there's been one thing, when they were leaving, there were some things passed along that does not, it's just not adding up now to what they felt like, how this was, and so they're just, they just need an explanation, that's it. I mean, that's all I'm saying, is I'm not, I'm not saying we need to give them thirty more thousand dollars or an inflationary, like, we're gonna go on.
They just need another level of funding.
They just need to know, is this, is this their number moving forward every year type of thing? Is that, I just need to go back to them and explain.
I think they gotta reply every year, they have to reply every year, yeah.
Yeah, every year, I don't think there's a year and T in a year, right? Yeah. And I, and I think again, it goes back to, this is a, something I think has value in our community, but we're subsidizing it, right? And so I think you have to evaluate it every year and say, can we afford it and what level can we afford to.
And Chris's goal, Chris has flat out told me, their goal is to be self-sustaining. They, they, to where they can never need to come, but this is,
I love that.
They're year one, right? And we did, unless a lot of, they had a lot of expenses coming out of the gate that they weren't, you know? So they're just trying to understand.
It's a bridge till they get to that point.
Yes, that's what, so they're, they're not trying to, truly, they're not trying to take advantage of the city, I think they're trying to.
On this process, is there, on, on awarding this stuff, not in this one, but in future years, like a merit or a, uh, a sub, a pro, a benefit to the city, value benefit to the city for the groups that ask for these funds or ask for these grants?
You can certainly create that or implement that.
Yeah, I think really this, this is the first year we've tried it this way within a, with an agreement, um.
I was trying to get away from people coming to you on the fly and asking for money. I love money, yeah.
Yeah, for anything, we're good.
Cause that's, that's not fair to you, and it's not fair to the public for somebody to show up at a council meeting and ask for sponsorship or money or donations.
Yeah, I love that.
The process is good, it just isn't.
So I, I think we're working through it, so that really, I guess, the, the question tonight is not really, are you awarding them? So how much do you want us to put in the budget line item for that grant? That's really what we need some direction on. And again, I, right, it's not, it's not one of our major budgets, so we didn't spend a ton of time on it. There've been other ones we've been focusing on though. And they're gonna stay next to it, Kyle, I'm sorry.
So, so you recommend ninety thousand five hundred, it's, it's what's allocated this year?
That's, that's what's.
What's our full bill?
Just take, just take a lot of.
A nod on that one, ninety.
I mean, I would love to see it creep up to even one hundred or, you know, an even number, I don't know if that really matters, but per years, nix.
I'd really be ninety thousand five hundred and twelve dollars and seventy six.
Nathan makes me round the numbers now, so I have to do with the, the ten, with the ten. So it, it, this, this plays a little bit into that discussion, uh, about the Miss Harriman contest, which when we were running it was about nineteen thousand.
Knowledge year we raised.
Nineteen five, yeah, sixteen.
Eighteen or nineteen thousand, it's a very, um, expensive entry fee into the Utah Scholarship Pageant, and the Utah Scholarship Pageant, they give eight thousand dollars, just an entry pageant. So that's part of that, part of it is the scholarship money, it's going to our royalty, part of it is the flowers and the tiaras and the state, the stage rental and all those things. The Friends group has a fair argument that the royalty really doesn't do anything associated with what they're doing. Um, that they're really just a city representative, and I think that's a fair argument.
Yeah, me too.
But it's really a discussion, do we wanna continue? There are cities that are going away from the scholarship pageant, they do not have to be affiliated with a city. There could be a volunteer out there that's very ambitious, that just wants to run the Miss Harriman Scholarship Pageant, and they can do it. Uh, South Jordan's looking for somebody to run theirs, the city has gone away from, from doing it. We typically have, I would say, eight people participate in the pageant, um, every year. We've had really great representatives that have been very active and some that have not been as active.
Okay, good as time as any to say it. I think awarding scholarships based on anything having to do with, uh, a beauty pageant is just not reading the room. That is not aligned with the, 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 the current values of, of what's being expressed in, in our. Um, I think for the same amount of money, we could award those scholarships based on merit, contribution. Uh, a- all different kinds of things, have nothing to do with dressing up in a gown, right? Uh, that's just, uh, uh, nothing against our royalty, cause I think they're fantastic and I appreciate all the work they do, but it, it's not, it shouldn't be based on anything to do with appearance, that's just yuck. And I think that we could lower the amount we're paying and directly award scholarships to people who merit those scholarships, um, I think is a much better use of the funds.
Well, we have the Thomas Butterfield Scholarship already, it's a city that was sponsored, so we could even divert money into that rather than the other or anything.
Right, and this. Do more of those, or, or, I, look, I'm not opposed to having it, um, you know, a, a, a scholarship for young women in our community who are trying to do something, blah, 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 but I think it should be, you know, limited to Harriman residents, it should be, um, you know, uh, maybe. You know, limited to Harriman residents, it should be, um, you know, uh, maybe seniors or, you know, or so, I mean, we can, we can set up the parameters, but I just. The idea of having it associated with a pageant is just. Like you said, flowers and tiaras and stage rentals, it's just money going out the door that's not benefiting those young women.
I think the costs are crazy, but the program itself and what, what they've changed to, and the merits and the requirements they have are very close to exactly what you're saying. Although they do, they do objectify at some level, at some base level, right, I'm not gonna deny that, but.
I'm just grateful they removed the swimsuit competition.
Yep, yeah, there's still other pages that do it, but yeah, not, not this one, um. I, I think.
I have been a judge at these pageant studios.
Yeah. You can, you can definitely, um, see the change and, and the growth from our, the people that have ran it in the past, and, and, and even Laura Twitchell, them, they've. From those girls day one, all the way through the interview process and stuff, really, really rough day one, but day sixteen, day twenty, whatever the, the term is, they, you can tell the development of those. Um, but I, are there better programs, probably, right, could be. Are there better ways to allocate the money to more localized people, like, and like Wendy said, there's some royalty groups are dead on every time, come to every event, really participate. Some are, get busy, and that program goes to twenty-six now, the age, you get those mid-twenty-year-olds that they're not super excited about meeting the city. You get the eighteen-year-olds graduating and still part of the city, easy, right, so.
So when do we need to make a decision on this?
Our next, the next pageant would be in November of this year.
So you need it for this, if, if we are going to do it.
It'd be quick, because they're gonna start doing the application process, and bringing people in for interviews.
We would have to budget for it, if, if the Friends aren't going to run it, then we would have to budget for it, if, if, if we're going to keep it sponsored as a city.
Our current one's gonna miss Utah next month, it's May, right, yeah.
And listen, I'm not, I don't, I don't wanna derail the positive things that these organizations do, cause I've talked with a lot of these young women and, uh, their, their, their platforms that they, uh, advocate for. The fundraising they do, the, you know, the time that they donate, their, their charitable work, all praiseworthy and, and really, really fantastic stuff. I think even if we wanted to call it a, a Miss Harriman's scholarship thing, that would be fine, I'm just, the idea that we're spending money on a pageant, I, I just don't.
Or an entry fee that.
To make.
Yeah, that's, that's, that's more than the scholarships we give all the girls, and that's what.
Yeah, yeah. Yeah, I mean, if we're not even giving out eight thousand dollars in scholarships to.
The recipients.
Young women in our own city that are doing so many great things, right, yeah.
The Butterfield Scholarship.
Yeah, the Butterfield Scholarship, you don't give it, and that's for people who give service hours for sure.
Yeah.
We need to.
I, I don't think we need to, yeah.
We need to re-look at the Butterfield Scholarship, cause I don't think, I don't think, I think that that needs to be bumped up for service hours for sure.
The qualifications and the, yeah, the merits.
Yeah, we need to look at that, that thing.
But I don't think we need to recreate the will, maybe we reinvest in our current program and add to it.
Yeah, maybe so. I'm open to other suggestions, I'm just not sure that's, that's the right way we should go, so it's been on my mind for a while, just now.
So that's.
So just some direction on the budget, what do you wanna do with the, the nonprofit grant?
That would reduce.
No.
No, okay.
It's not included.
It's not in there right now, so if you took it on, we'd have to find that. And, and the, right now, and, and these are budget numbers, but we're balanced in, it's taken a lot of time, but we, and our balance in the general fund on the biennial. So there, we save a little bit the first year, we think we're, we're, are we, yeah, that's how it is, spend a little bit more because of some capital. Will we actually spend all that, no, there's prob, there's always some under spend, but I, I, I'm always, I don't like to bank on that, and so if you tell us, then we're gonna have to go back, we're gonna have to cut it from someplace to add it. Which is fine, it's, it's a council's direction.
Wouldn't it cut from a ninety though?
The question is, the bringing, the bringing forth of this ninety thousand five hundred, didn't that include?
No, that is not included.
It does not include Miss Herman.
Oh, yes, it did in previous years.
Well, in, our, our number had it, but they're, they're saying a hundred fifteen doesn't include it, so if you funded them something less, you might get it, right?
It's a part of the request issue.
So if we're, so if we're gonna take it back, we take back the money that we were funding.
Okay, so what, that's what I'm trying to make sure.
So the request that they put in, the application that they put in does not include them carrying Miss Herman.
They're one fifteen.
They're asking for a hundred fifteen without Miss Herman.
Without Miss Herman.
Without Miss Herman, okay.
Yes.
So, and it's eight, how much total is it?
Eighteen thousand.
Twenty thousand, I was hoping.
We bring in about a thousand of revenue in ticket sales.
Also flowers up front this year.
Okay, well, I don't know, what do you guys want to do? I wanna go.
Here's my, can I give you my two cents on this one?
You have five cents.
So, I think this goes back to Sherry's comment regarding, uh, Friends of Harriman, right? This is supporting a very small portion of population, this is a minute portion of population, said an average of eight participants, no doubt, it's a great program. I know they do a lot of good things, but what is, I think we have to, some of these are legacy things that started with the city way back when, as, I think we have to take stock of where we're at. We're trying to balance the budget, we're cutting a few thousand dollars from this budget, a few thousand from that. Do we have twenty thousand to throw at something like this, is a, is it the city's responsibility to give scholarships? Um, I think that's maybe a separate discussion, right? I like the service-oriented one that, that we do, like Sherry said, take a look at that. Should we look at increasing those amounts, sure, when it comes to the pageant, I would say we follow in the lead of some other cities that have looked at this and said, that's not really a city function. Right, uh, that'd be my two cents, is I, I don't think it's a city-centric thing, um, and we should put those funds elsewhere. When it comes to the, uh, our, whatever we call it, sorry, I'm still in between things, but yes, the grant application.
Grant.
I think we just need to be clear that that's the total amount that we're setting aside in the budget for anyone that comes asking, right? If, and this is a separate deci- decision, Nathan's asking, is ninety thousand the number? They've balanced the budget, they've looked at it this way, my answer is yes, that's the number. A separate question in a separate meeting is, how do we divvy up that money to those that have applied? And then if people come around during the course of the year, the answer is, you can apply during the next budget season.
I, you know. I, I don't think I would ever discourage anybody, like, if there was a group that wanted to come and say, we wanna hold a Miss Harriman pageant in your community, go ahead and fund that, but I don't.
And then we get a partnership with them, and let's, yeah.
And let me use our name of Harriman and make them fund the match.
And you also, I mean, even last council meeting, you had a request for the kite situation, the kite festival, right? So we're working them through the special event permit process and the costs that are associated with renting space and special event permit fee and all those things. That may be a possible application in the future, right?
Right. Right, but we can't just say yes to everybody that just comes, they have to fall within, here's the budget, apply for the grant, whoever gets it, gets it, right?
But, and, and maybe, that's a good point, Wendy, and maybe, and part of that next discussion, right, that's not tonight, that's the next discussion on who we award what, but do we. Do we keep a contingency amount for those smaller things that we wanna support to help with those fees, right? Instead of just waiving them, cause those are real costs, we, maybe we've set aside five thousand dollars to such. So there, sorry. To the types of things. Sorry, Jared, I didn't mean to interrupt, you have about thirteen thousand of leeway in your donation line, so there, there is already contingency funds set aside.
Yeah, we, within the legislative, but so in councils' divisions budget, we gave you some of that.
Like the five thousand to Riverdale, or the Warriors, or for the Warriors, those kinda things, yeah, okay.
Yeah, there's, that donation for the senior center does come out.
So you have like.
Doesn't, or is that, that's a governmental, we moved that out.
No, you, no, you split it to a new line, so.
Used to come out.
We have a little bit of discretionary fund in there for kite festival kinda thing, yeah.
We should.
Okay.
We should talk about that.
You good?
Yeah.
We've got, we'll, we're gonna, you still get to adopt your tentative budget and final budget, so until you vote on it and it's passed, you can change it however you want.
It's a budget amendment.
It's just require, yeah, you can also.
Can we get, can we budget a pair of scissors for Mer on the dais?
So does that use?
So does that use teeth?
Mine is candy wrapper.
I have three pairs of scissors in my office.
You get the left-handed doll ones with the rounded corners?
All the ones, yeah. It was just the re, I can open an M and M's, but it's a stupid Reese's, it was like more plastic.
Those are, those are, those are doll Reese's, they, they're supposed to. They're getting more calories to open up.
They're healthy, they're healthy Utah Reese's.
Yeah, you have the healthy Harriman thing, we have that all day, you know, healthy Utah.
Okay, well, thank you, everybody, we will, this one, I'll look for motion to go back to closing now.
We have to rewrite this, yeah, and say what?
Mine yours, oh.
Say your D.
Yes, but it's, that's true. It's ours.
Are you doing, what number are you putting on?
Are we just doing property?
I think it's. Yeah, it's just going to be.
Are you doing property, and isn't it set?
Um, no, I think, I, I think I'm, I, I was thinking about that, I think I'll just do a memo with Todd, and Todd will send it.
Just D?
For the privacy stuffs, they want us to do all that under that, but I think we can do a memo, that's, that's protected.
Oh, C and D, what about?
Yeah, so just D then?
C and D, property, it's property for sure, oh, litigation.
And it's litigation.
Litigation.
C and D, right?
Litigation, so C and D.
Okay, I make a motion to temporarily recess the city council meeting to go into closed meeting for the following purposes provided in Utah State Code Annotated Fifty-two, four, two oh five. Strategy sessions to discuss pending or reasonable imminent litigation, strategy sessions to discuss purchase, exchange or lease of real property, or to discuss a proposed development agreement. Project proposal or financing proposal related to the found, a land owned by the city.
So, good motion, my chair is, Teddy, uh, Teddy?
Yep.
Sherry?
Yes.
Steve?
Yes.
Jared? Oh, yes, that motion carries, so we need, who do we need in here, Justin Go, Justin Mody, they're good.
Yeah, so might be the show.
See you guys, have a good night.
I think he's, no, he's got a long side, yeah.
Thank God, yeah.
We'll do it in good view.
Thanks, Mike.
Good job.